Ballot issue on the June 4th primary election ballot. You'll be asked whether or not you would like to review your form of government, the questions required by our constitutional Montana, to be asked of voters every 10 years, and this is the year. So the arguments before, I don't know who wrote this, but not anybody who was, we were not leaning one way or the other about all this, for the review of the government of Bozeman and Gallatin County, and the establishment and funding not to exceed the number of dollars in mill amounts of a local government study commission consisting of X number of people to examine the government, or city, or county, and city recommendations on the government, against the review of the government of Bozeman and Gallatin, and the establishment and funding not to exceed the number of dollars of a local government study, blah, blah, blah. It makes no sense. Okay. We have asked the candidates, three of you will be elected from these six, and Sandra Wilson is running uncontested, all for this school board. So you'll be asked to vote for three, that's correct?
Four.
Or four, yeah, sure. So, okay, here's, we start with, we have asked the candidates to talk for two minutes and tell us why they ought to be elected. That's first thing we're gonna do. There are two timers right in the middle candidates, and they'll tell you when to stop. But you get two minutes for this. Who would like to start?
I thought it was two minutes to introduce.
Do we introduce? Yeah.
Introduce yourself.
Introduce yourself.
Sure. So, who wants to start? Okay, fine. Gary, go for it.
Thank you very much. Everybody good?
No.
Is the sound system on?
It's not.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Sound better?
No.
Can you stand up?
They can't hear him.
Shout out my...
Stand up, please. Stand up.
Thank you. My name is Gary Lucine, Rupert Fortbatten. My wife and I moved to Oklahoma Zula, to Bozeman, in 1981. Started our private practice in physical therapy. Been at that for nearly 40 years. Also do practice, started in Belgrade, Calispell, transitioned all those to owners, employees of our organization. But through that, I learned the importance of culture in an organization. My involvement in the school system, I have two children go through Bozeman Public School. During that time, participated in activities, a lot of things that our parents do. And became involved in the renovation, building of CJ, new CJ Middle School, renovation of Bozeman High School, and then all the buildings after that. I was elected to board in 2005. Been on the board for 19 years, been chaired twice. I've been involved in Montana School Boards Association Board Director. Was on that board for 13 years. Just retired last year. I was eight years on the Dean of Education, Education, Health and Human Development at MSU for eight years. So through that experience, I got to see how education operates in different levels, inhering from different school boards, and have learned that we need some change in our education, our system of education today. It's difficult, that's a process I'm working on now. And is one of the reasons I'm running again for the school board, is to try and complete that process. And it's going well to this point. But while we have a very good school in our district, schools in our district, we need some changes needed. Thanks.
Who wants to be next? Okay, Sandy.
Hello, my name is Sandy Wilson, and I'd like to thank you all for coming tonight and the League of Women Voters for putting this on. I have lived in the valley for 50 years, and have two children. They went through Anderson School, rural school south of town, and came into the high school in Bozeman. My professional, my profession was teaching in public schools for 33 years, three of those at Oakwood School, and 30 at Anderson School. When I retired, I was really struggling with retirement, and missed kids and missed working in schools. And so the opportunity arose to be appointed on the school board, and then I am now running unopposed for the fourth term. I agreed to the board nine minutes of service. I've been on many committees. Currently with the Bozeman School Foundation, we're building liaisons for the school district. I participated in ongoing board trainings, and I, many of you might have recognized me on Zoom. I was chaired during COVID. I'm a strong supporter of public schools. I also believe in collaboration. We are moving into a very different, very different times in schools and in our world. And it's really important to me to bring a bunch of minds and a bunch of ideas together to help solve the problems that we are facing, not only in our schools, but in our community and in our world. I'm a good listener. I really enjoy problem solving. And we have a lot of things in this school district that we're working on right now. And there always will be. And I also don't bring an agenda to the table except for doing what's best for our kids in Bozeman. Thank you. Oh, I did want to add, can I add one more thing on the difference between me and the other trustees?
Sure.
Okay. I represent all the rural schools that surround Bozeman. And so Ramon, Anderson, Gallatin Gateway, Mont Corbin, and I vote on high school issues only. So that's what makes me different from the rest of the people who are running.
Who wants to be next?
Hi, good evening for coming here tonight. My name is Leon Burson, and I have lived in Bozeman for over 50 years. My spouse and I, we've raised three kids who went through Bozeman Schools, and then back to our youngest, just graduated last year from Bozeman High. So since 1989, I've been in public education. I'm actually a former eighth grade teacher at CJ. I taught at MSU in the Math and Science Department. And currently what I do, I'm a math education facilitator. So that means I travel to school districts around the country, and I support teachers in math education. So why do I want to be on the school board? Very simply, I am a passionate supporter, both personally and professionally, in public education. I think that the investment in our kids is the greatest pain for the buck that we can ever make. And so that's a resource I'm deeply committed to, and provide the best education for the students in our community. You would think that all my years being in public education, that being a trustee, as I have for the last three years, I have a lot to learn, very steep learning curve, on what my role is as a trustee. So one thing that I want to highlight is in some of my subcommittee work, I serve as municipal director on the Montana School Board Association. That means that I partner with trustees from around the state and work on guiding policy at the state level in the legislature. And that's really important work I hope to continue, because all of these pieces are what helped to make our community and our schools grow. So I have to continue in that capacity. Thank you for being here.
Go.
Hello, thank you all for being here. My name is Melissa Moran. I am originally from Baton Rouge, Louisiana. I moved, I graduated from Louisiana State University in December of 99 with a degree in elementary education. In January of 2000, I moved to Montana with a guy. 25 years later, we are still here. I never taught in the classrooms. I was a substitute teacher in Casper, Wyoming for a while. Had a couple of long-term positions in the Casper School District. I was offered a first grade position at a school in Casper. However, my husband and I moved back to Montana and got in the restaurant business. 21 years ago, I believe. And we have 13 restaurants throughout Montana, Wyoming, Idaho, Utah, Colorado, and Sioux City, Nebraska. And I love public education. I feel very fortunate. I have two boys that are an eighth grader and a 10th grader, one at SAC and one at VHS. I do as much as I can to get involved in the schools, especially when they were younger. I'm on the Bozeman Schools Foundation Board. I've been on for nine years. I served as chair twice. I'm also a cat mentor at Highlight. I have been with my little girl for three years. And I just like, I love teachers. My favorite weekly year is Teacher Appreciation Week. And I'm just a proponent of public education. I feel very fortunate to have two kids go to school. Thank you.
Who would be next? Carmen?
Hi, my name is Carmen Bryant. Thank you all for coming tonight. I currently go to Bozeman High School. I am a senior there. And I have decided to run for school board because I really believe in student representation in the governing body. I think especially in Montana, it's really important that stakeholders have representation in whatever governing body that they also participate in. And that's really important in our schools. I've seen the ways in which our school board has successfully navigated COVID. As I moved here in the middle of, right when COVID actually happened, I moved here on the 13th from building school districts. And I've seen the immense amount of resources Bozeman Schools has provided me compared to other school districts in Montana. And I'm immensely grateful for that. I've also seen ways in which we can grow as a community. And within my time at the Bozeman Schools, I've served many roles, from being a student in the school district to being a civic educator in the community, an athlete, and an avid like peer. And I understand what it's like to be young in Montana, and specifically Bozeman, Montana, right now, and what issues we really need to tackle head-on right now, and how it's affecting students and teachers as we keep progressing in this stage. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank the Bozeman League of Women Voters for organizing this, the Bozeman Public Library for hosting this event. I'd also like to thank my wife, Arlena, for constantly motivating me to be a better father and person, my children, and I would like to thank all of you for being here this evening. My name is Josh Sadice, and I'm from Butte, America, excuse me, Montana. And after leaving Butte, I decided to follow my passion for skiing. And I've been going all over the world. I competed on the U.S., North America, and at the pre-skiing world tour as a sponsored athlete, and a pre-qualified athlete on the pre-skiing world tour. I first moved to Bozeman in 2003. I went back to school at MSU, got my bachelor's degree in cell biology and neuroscience, and a business administration minor in 2012. Since then, collectively, my wife and I have started six businesses in Bozeman. We've successfully sold two of them. And because of that, these small businesses have given me the knowledge that I have now. First and foremost, our children are our future. Schools are the guardians of what we of society hold as our most important asset, our children. As a parent and an active member of this community, I understand the hopes and dreams that we all have for our children. And this is why I'm running for school board. I will focus on a few things. My top priority as school board trustee will be to enhance student success, and to do this by getting back to the basics of core curriculum. We also need to foster collaboration by engaging both parents and teachers in this process. In addition, I believe in the importance of ensuring fiscal responsibility through the distribution of our district's financial resources, promoting transparency, accountability, and finally, to advocate for policy reform, and to do so with parental input and teacher input. In conclusion, if I'm elected, I will apply all of my expertise, and thank you for coming.
Josh? Robert?
Yeah, Robert Black.
You're the man.
I'm Robert Black. I'm born in Sheffield, Alabama, before Pearl Harbor. A few months before Mitch McConnell, born in the same hospital. So we're looking at age here. Let me rattle off, as a lawyer and a PhD, I've got to rattle off some stuff here. There's a lot that I, I mean, experience on that. JD is from South Carolina. Admitted Montana, Colorado, South Carolina. Member of the Supreme Court of the United States. PhD from Princeton. BA and MA from Oxford, Pembroke College, Oxford. MA from Vanderbilt. BA from Sawony. I was a trustee at my alma mater, University of the South, in Sawony, Tennessee. 18 years of teaching, I think, hard to count them all. English in colleges and constitutional law and torts in law school. This time last year, I was teaching constitutional law in law school. 10 years of postgraduate study. 30 years of running my own business as a lawyer in Charleston, civil rights, personal injury. Author of two books. I'm Robert Ray Black, Robert Ray Black online. And co-editor of The Pro Salter, the first book of the Bible ever translated into English. It's before Wycliffe, by the way. I got a direct commission, whoa, in the Infantry Military Intelligence Korea. Prosecutor to juveniles, anything from murder, shoplifting, truancy, and family court. I was a substitute teacher at Gallatin High School until I was fired in December of '23. Ranch hand at the Burns Ranch, Big Timber. And I got the first woman in an all-male college at the Sittibul, about 25 years ago, you might remember that. Part-time employee at REI. Have one stepdaughter, a great politician in the South Carolina Legislature, legislation. I have two sons, one of whom is coming tomorrow. He's a dentist. And I have one in Helsinki. I'm going to Helsinki to see him in June and July, and then over to a reunion in England. I'm gonna stop. I have 30 seconds, but I'm gonna let it go. Thank you. I've worked with the League of Women Voters before in the Sittibul case. Good to see you all here.
Thank you.
We asked the candidates to prepare a question. They each have two minutes to tell you what they thought about. And then after that, we'll get to your questions. And the rest of you, it will be about your question. So the question we asked them to prepare was, what do you see as the biggest issues that should be addressed by the school board? And do you want to choose yourself, or do you want me to just call on you?
Just go down the line.
I'll tell you what we're gonna do. We started with Gary. This time, we're gonna start with Sandy. And we'll just go around, and I'll pick on the one, you know, one next to the next one. Sandy?
Can everyone hear you? I have a... No. There are a lot of issues facing our schools today. And one of them that trickles into a lot of things that we're dealing with right now is funding, and adequate funding, especially for our local schools. Currently, the formula that we've been using for a long time that guarantees equal funding for all kids in Montana does not have a mechanism to get inflation funding over 3%. In addition to that, there's no opportunity to get additional funding for us to operate our schools in a high cost of living area. That trickles down to us making it very difficult for us to pay our teachers what we need to pay them. We're currently, I think, 50th or 51st in the state in starting teacher salary. And we, we need to do something about that. Currently, well, pretty soon, we're gonna be looking at this formula and, and asking for some different ways to fund school. So, because right now, I feel like it's really not equal for our Bozeman schools. Changes coming, the way we deliver instruction, what we teach, how we teach is coming in. We are having a lot of change happening in our public schools right now. We're moving to block scheduling. We are, professional learning communities are, we're asking our teachers to come out of their classroom and collaborate with each other, and share kids. It's no longer my kids and your, and your kids and your kids, but it's our kids. So there's a lot of new things that are coming down the pipe that are really exciting in the age of education. But they come with issues that we're going to have to face. So that's what I think are the most pressing issues.
Lauren?
So Sandy and I did not talk about this ahead of time. I had a similar thing. What I'm gonna start with is that of all the things about our schools right now, we have an incredible staff, incredible teachers who do amazing things. And I'm concerned about challenges and stress that we're facing. And they, they need all of our support and every resource that we can give them. And so embedded in that is, is funding. And funding is complex. You know, I've been learning more about it, the position that I've been in. You know, the funding that's needed so that our schools and our communities get what I feel that they deserve in quality. So the important thing that's happening with the funding formula is that in the 2025 legislature, we have a chance to redefine what is meant about equality public education. And that is gonna lead to a redefinition of what the equalization formula is going to be for, for all schools in Montana. And so the position that I'm in right now is I serve as the municipal director on the Montana School Boards Association. So I'm a piece of, part of those trustees that get to be in those conversations. And this is one of the things that I'm really motivated by to, to continue the work that I've been doing and work with that body. There's a lot to learn on how that operates. We're not, the school, the Montana School Board Association is not the only entity, but we work with the collaboration of other education entities throughout the state. And I feel that's an important voice to bring about what, what we're facing in Bozeman, and how that be a part of the conversation in Helena. And that's, we lead in the state. We, we are a high-functioning board, and we lead in the state for the double A schools and the precedents that we set. So I take that responsibility very seriously. And that trickles down to all the programming and all the things that are necessary to keep our really great teachers and to recruit, you know, talented people to stay on the Bozeman.
Thank you.
I think one of the biggest issues facing our schools is attracting staff. We, when I moved here in January of 2000, for every job applicant, for every job opening there was, there was over 100 applicants. It's not the case anymore. For every job opening there is, there's probably 10 applications. We have to figure out a way to start at the freshman class. And I don't know if they can take a survey, see who's interested in teaching, and figure out how to get them to stay and go to school at Montana State University, and stay here and want to teach in a state that we live in. We have to figure out how to attract people to Montana. It's expensive to live here. Retain our teachers, and just... I had the honor of awarding 40 worthy student scholarships to high school seniors about three weeks ago. And out of the 40 seniors, four of them were all going to school for elementary education, specializing in special ed. However, they are leaving the state of Montana and going to Grand Canyon University. How can we, as a district, work to keep those four seniors at Montana State University? To get them to come back and teach here? I think it's a big issue.
Carmen? One of the biggest issues I see facing my generation particularly is climate change. I've talked with every single one of my peers, my classmates. We're all deeply worried for our futures. Especially, we are living in Montana. Many people's Bozeman, many people's houses were burned to the ground in the Bridger fires. I know folks whose houses were flooded in Livingston, and the list goes on. I don't feel as though our schools are protected enough from the climate crisis or any climate disasters. And so one of my platforms within this campaign is to really amplify the fact that our district should be doing more to respond to the climate crisis. It's an issue that our generation has been, put the burden on, and is gonna continue to have to face for the rest of our lives as it only amplifies. And living in Montana, I don't think anyone wants to see our natural beauty go up in flames or sink. We all love the mountains, we love hiking. And with that, it's all about education. I think teaching students about what's going on, especially like an interdisciplinary climate curriculum that includes many different perspectives from folks that are low income, and students of color are especially affected by the climate crisis. These are things that need to be implemented into our schools to adequately address the climate crisis. Yes.
Josh?
I think the biggest issues that we'll need to address with the school board over the next several years include teacher recruitment and retention, and also accountability, and accountability at all levels. Firstly, teacher recruitment and retention are...
Administrators, parents, students, it's critical. Process for years has been kind of a top-down approach, legislature down. And I think, people I've talked to around the state, there's interest in maybe changing that dialogue, that discussion, and start a grassroots effort to really look at what's happening in our schools today, in our classrooms, because it's changing dramatically. I want to continue a good leadership in our district with a well-functioning board and administration. Recruitment and retention, as mentioned, is significant, but that's one of those external things that we really need to address as well. We continue to work hard to maintain our transparency. I think our district has done a good job in communicating with staff and parents, and being transparent with our community. We want to continue that, and continue to work together. Thank you.
Now, we're gonna take questions from you. And I would ask you strongly to not make a speech, but to ask your questions. And if you start to make a speech, I'm gonna stop you and be... Sorry. We came to hear the candidates, not the people in the audience. Wait, wait for a minute. We have, each candidate will have one minute to respond to a question. You can pass at any time, candidates, or you can say, "I agree with him/her," or you can have a minute to respond to it as well. And you can put your question to a particular person, if you like, but everybody gets a crack at all, at all the points. Okay? Is that... Everybody got the rules? No speeches, folks? Yes, and you read next.
I'd like you all to talk about book banning, especially in regards to science and sex ed.
Okay, book banning. Did everybody hear the question?
No.
She wants to know what the candidates think about book banning and sex education.
In regard to sex ed and science.
In regard to sex ed and science. Okay?
Josh, you stand?
I would.
Okay, so I'll speak up louder. I'm keen on this book banning issue. Banning books has to be challenged. Banning teachers is even worse. And we, 4,000, over 4,000 books were targeted for banning, and I think mainly, of course, you can assume it's Texas and Florida. I don't know where it is now in Montana, where the issues are. I do remember writing in law school an issue about why Ulysses was banned by James Joyce. So each, each generation has its books which are banned, or tried to be banned. And that has to be carefully looked at. That's why I think, as an academic who's whole careers in teaching English, I can read a book. And as a lawyer, I can read a case. And I, of course, it would be one vote out of eight, and I could be overvoted and so forth. But I'm keen on this issue not to ban books. First of all, it would just celebrate the book, and everybody would go out and read it. And online, as you know, online is, is a nightmare.
Who's next? Go ahead, Gary.
Thanks. I, we dealt with book bans in our board. In our district, parents and students have the option to not read any book in our district. If they don't want to read it, they don't have to read it. They'll be provided another book. But when you look at science and sex ed, so my career in physical therapy dealt a lot with science, physiology, biology, and all those type of things. So that's an important element, I think, for all of our students to understand and to know. It doesn't have to be dramatic or anything, but it's a, it's a fact. And it's, there may be some books that teachers review, and they decide that doesn't fit in our curriculum. But there, books in our district are well-reviewed by multiple teachers and administrators to determine if it fits into our curriculum as it should.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to piggyback off of what Gary is saying, that we've, at the board, we've had people challenge books.
What I've learned from that is I really trust the process that we go through through curriculum reviewing. The thing is that teachers are, have a curriculum and standards, and they are the ones choosing that material that they find is appropriate for what students need to learn. I really trust that process. I really, we hire educators to make those professional decisions, and I really trust the process for them to do that. And if there is a conflict, there is a way to bring that to the forefront. And any parent has, has the right to advocate for their kids to not read a book. So, so nobody's being forced to read, you know, parents have the right to make that decision for their kids. So, one, I trust teachers and the process in our district to make those decisions of, of what's being offered to our kids and to teach it in a way that's, you know, sensitive for those topics in science and sex ed.
Thank you. Who's next?
So, I joined the board in December. And I think two weeks after I joined the board, I got a phone call that said, they said, "I'm dropping a book off on your front porch for you to read." And it's like, "We have book club and on the board?" And I was, okay, not realizing that it was a book that I was trying to get banned. And over my Christmas break, I read the policies and I read the procedures, and it is a fantastic process the district goes through that they look at before they decide on to ban, on whether or not to ban a book. And, and I'll be honest, I have a 10th grade son, and I showed him the book. And I said, "Did you read this book last year?" And he said, "Mom, I've quoted that book in my final paper so many times because I can relate to a lot of things." And he is not a strong reader, but it was a good, easy read for him. And I think we have to trust the educators in the building, and they know what's right or wrong. And they, they will figure out how to teach the subjects.
Next. Sammy?
I agree with everything that's been said. We have a great policy and procedure in place for parents to bring forth a book or content that they don't want their child to engage in. But it's important to consider that that decision is made for that child, not for the rest of the kids or the rest of the families in the district. The other thing I wanted to add that the district does is any time there's new curriculum material, and I believe there's some in, on tables in Wilson right now, where they invite the public to come in and look at new curriculum material that's being brought forth and, and ask for feedback on that. So, there is the opportunity for parents and community members to come in and review these materials as are being considered. I think that's really important.
Carly?
I agree with what everyone stated before. I believe banning books is not something that should be applied to every single student. Every student has their own personal choice whether or not to read a book if it contradicts with their own views. However, I think the option should be there to diversify their views in their education through multiple reading materials. And that should not be censored or banned, especially when it comes to topics like sex ed and science. Especially because like in my high school career, I have not been taught a comprehensive sex education. And that's something that can be taught from books. So, censoring and banning those kinds of materials only further like disparages your own education.
And Josh?
Yeah, with the background in cell biology and neuroscience, with an emphasis in biomedical, essentially what you do to go to medical school, which I was planning on doing, following the footsteps of many of my family members. In the context of science, which I think is, is very, very important. Right now, we spend the second most of any developed country in the world, yet we're ranked 30th in science. And we're never going to get further society unless we can get those science and math further. I think teaching sex ed and science is extremely important. As far as other books go, however, though, I would say that I think fostering collaboration and letting parents be involved is, is their right to be involved. But as far, it's, it's kind of hard to ban certain things when you're trying to teach sex ed. But I, I think the parents have to have a say, because there's thousands of books in every subject. And if there's one particular book that's really bothering parents, I guess I don't understand why we can't just pick another book. Thank you.
Right there.
My question actually to Sandra and, and most of the other candidates. So, with Carly, can, yes, with her understanding of reality and laws of physics, she has zero chances to compete-
Excuse me.
Chinese and Russian for the- hang on just a second.
We can't hear. And I don't want to, I want to hear the question. And you can keep your opinion, Carly, to yourself.
So, should I repeat it? So, she has zero chances to compete against the Chinese and against Russian. So, what's your vision of her future? What jobs, other than being a chief servant to, to the Chinese?
Question.
You see for her generation?
Okay. Do you understand the question?
I think what, I think what she asked is what future do we see for college?
I asked specifically that these ladies and here-
Hey! Take a seat! Sit down. Take a seat! Right now!
And against Russian.
Are you sitting now?
Yes.
As you should be.
Do you, do you understand it now?
Sit down! Okay, everybody.
I think we're just-
Who else has a question?
We're going to move on.
I've got a question.
Great!
My question is mostly addressed to Professor Sadai, did I pronounce it correctly?
Sadai.
Sadai, I'm sorry.
Forgot the topic.
But I would like to hear from everyone. You talk about, you've mentioned the word accountability almost every time you stood up. I want to, I'd like to understand better what you mean by accountability for teachers. What does that mean? Could you elaborate on that?
What is accountability for teachers? And particularly, should I ask Josh?
You know, I think accountability for teachers can mean a lot of different things. I think accountability, you know, as we mentioned, right now, our reading scores have dropped, our maths, and the rest of our scores have plateaued. And so, we need to go through and reassess, teacher by teacher, what their, their teaching style, who is mentoring these teachers. And we need, as a district, to then go and, and, because that's unacceptable that, that our scores are plateauing and dropping when, I mean, most of our proficiency above levels, even in Gallant County, hover around 40%. And so, I think that we've got to hold our teachers accountable. We need to support our teachers, but we, but we need to hold them accountable for, for obviously what's going on here. And I know they're stretched thin, but, you know, we need to be there to help them succeed. And accountability is a way we can do that.
We know that there is an achievement gap in our schools. Our current superintendent has opened that up and let us know what it is and has brought several different initiatives into our district to help us now, particularly in Bozeman reading. We are now going to have a four-year-old early literacy program in Bozeman starting, identifying kids and addressing those needs, those pre-literacy needs in kids. We are also, all our teachers are trained in the science of reading, which is a new approach to teaching reading, and it's research-based. And all of these things are going to help our teachers be better trained and have, and, and increase access to the things that all kids need, because we take all kids.
Yeah, Gary?
Yeah, thanks. This is one of those internal and external issues. So, internally, we have great teachers in our district that are working their tail off every day to teach our students. One of our main problems is their workload, what's been placed on their plate every day. The increase in behavioral issues that have emerged significantly in the last three, four years, five years. Change in curriculum, the workload that is put on teachers, and they're in the same amount of time. So, our system of education continues to exist in the same system that many of you went through years ago. And the need for our students is changing significantly, and we need to address that. So, holding teachers accountable, they need to have the right environment to really teach. Like, they should be able to teach, our administrators need to be in the same boat.
Thanks, Gary.
So, to add on to different things that have been said here as far as teacher accountability, it's, it's really complex how we measure student success. And certainly, our teachers are a huge factor on helping our students to achieve. And there are many other, you know, external factors that go into when you say a student is proficient and what proficiency actually means. So, one of the areas that I see the district addressing that is the build of professional learning communities. And this whole year, we've been listening to each school talk about the professional learning community plan. And what's really exciting is those pieces are happening right now, and they need, they continue to need our support. Teachers get together in teams, they do the data of their students. They target and look at like where, where are the things that we need to address and how can we pool our resources and address the things that need to be, so all of our students can succeed. So, I see our district making strides towards that. And, and that's where our teachers need our support for that accountability piece.
Let me just add a quick note of discord. The quality of education is what I spoke about earlier, which is related to the quality of the educator, the teacher. I did not find the quality of the teachers acceptable when I was substitute teaching. That's why it's, it's helpful to be in the trenches and see what's going on in the classroom. I was struck from the roles of substitute teacher because of three things. I said that etymology to the students, "May I please add this to the regular teacher," is important in definition of words. I added to the letter that King wrote from the Birmingham jail. I knew the person who wrote the letter, the bishop I knew. This is civil rights. I wrote a book about blacks, it's banned in Boston, in Charleston. And I talked about the Revolutionary War being important in the, in the history lesson. For those three things, and I refused to serve as a secretary, I'm a teacher. And I was fired. I think the quality of teaching is not good enough.
I mean, with my personal experience with my own teachers through my four years in Golden High, I've seen them do an excellent job as educators navigating state legislation that's trying to constantly change what education looks like in our state, while also trying to please multiple stakeholders in this town. And I think they're doing a great job with the resources that they're given. I don't necessarily think that it's responsibility that teachers aren't taking that our achievement gap is the reason why it is. I think it's that our schools aren't giving enough resources and time to our teachers themselves. And they need more of that to be able to expand for their students, because they are just humans. They're teachers, and they're paid just like everyone else has for a job. And just like the, us and everyone else, they should be given the resources to grow.
I'm going to tag off of what Leona said. So, three weeks ago, I did wake up in the middle of the night and said, "How are these teachers being held accountable for these PLCs?" And the very next day, we had a luncheon at Emily Dickinson. And, and my answer was given to me. Those teachers, the fifth-grade teachers get together twice a week and discuss how they want to help each student. And then their principal holds them accountable. And then we saw the same thing at Meadowlark. So, I do think they are being held accountable. Is there progress to be made? Of course, there's always progress to be made. But they are being held accountable, and they care about these kids.
Way over here, the gentleman.
I'm just way over here? And my question actually tees off of what you already talked about. I've been in this town for 30 years. For 30 years, the amount of money the state has given to education has gone like this. We've supported Bozeman and its bond issuances and its school district.
Sure. Your question?
Oh, we've talked about money. How are you going to get more money? Everybody says we need more. How would you get more?
Okay, thank you.
Got it.
Who wants to start? Gary?
Good question. That's one of those external issues. We're only given the money that legislature decides they're going to give us. The legislative intercommittees are meeting now. And it was actually a pretty good group that's really trying to address issues in education. But in my personal view, it's not sufficient enough. They're not hearing from the right people. We need to hear from teachers, administrators, parents, and students in our schools to know what they need, and here's how we need to fund it. And the legislature needs to listen to that. That's one of our external challenges. Because there's very little we can do as a district to really change the funding formula. We're only given so much money. If I gave you $10 and say, "That's all you get, you go buy, do whatever you want to with it," that's it. So, we need, we're very fortunate in this community, by the way, and I thank everybody here. We have a very supportive community. And that's somewhat unusual around the state. So, it's our community that's helping us reach our max and fund our resources as much as we can.
Man?
Vic, thank you for that question. And I want to reiterate what Gary said, that we are fortunate in this community that Bozeman has supported all the levies for our schools. And what I, what I do want to say is then, what Gary talked about, he's mentored me. He helped, he's held that position as municipal director, has mentored me to be in that position, to hopefully be part of that conversation in Helena, to work with the legislature and thinking about how we can change that funding formula and hopefully make those, those kinds of adjustments to how our schools are funded. It's, it's a huge issue. We have an opportunity to lead the state, like I said before. So, that, that's one of the reasons why I'm excited to hopefully continue this work and elevate that voice. Gary's been phenomenal in laying the groundwork and establishing those kinds of relationships. And so, we're, we're especially with Bozeman, I think, to be able to have those connections and hopefully have that kind of influence.
Anybody else want to speak to that?
I'll speak, good.
Sure.
And again, yeah, thank you for the question, because I think this is going to be an issue for every school board forever. There's never going to be enough money. The state hasn't whipped up too fully the number that they're supposed to be giving to all the districts. And so, I think that we need to diligently look at accountability as far as administrative costs. We need to make sure that absolutely everything that we can't shave is being shaved, because really, I mean, the teachers, we need to be holding these teachers, because they're essential to our children's life, essentially. And I also think that as an entrepreneur, we can kind of step back and think outside the box, because I know there's a lot of other ways that we can get money coming into the school system other than from squeezing your taxes harder every year.
Robert?
This is on the money, well, briefly, always discordant. It's in, it's in Helena, it's, it's not our issue, as Gary was saying. It struck me as possibly that the trustees could lobby, if state allows, lobby this crowd up in Helena. As far as the science that Josh was talking about, we've got a governor that doesn't believe in evolution. So, we're not, we're not in good shape here. And he controls everything, and so forth and so on. And we're, we're, we're in bad shape.
Yes, sir, right there.
I think it's given that both our student population and our faculty is very diverse in their backgrounds and values and everything. How do we firewall so that students aren't being, in the classroom are being educated on facts and not being given indoctrinated in values that may contradict what their families have?
Did everybody hear the question? Who would like to answer that one? Man?
I'm going to bring my teacher voice into this, and, or my perspective. And because as board, as a, as person of the board, I'm governing, right? So, I'm not micromanaging in classrooms and those kinds of things. But again and again, what I really kind of have come to believe and seen is that I trust teachers to make really good decisions in the classroom. And we just heard from one of our high school students, and from the experience of my own kids. And I'm not saying every teacher is perfect, but I really, I really believe that I have a trust in our teachers in how they're delivering curriculum and how they're handling those issues. I taught eighth grade. There's, there's a lot that happens in the eighth grade and feeling and understanding that. I don't think I've met a teacher who doesn't care about how they communicate those ideas and how they foster discussion in the classroom. I also have really seen how-
I also have really seen how teachers welcome parents and that dialogue and what their concerns are in having those conversations. I don't think there's a teacher that I've met who doesn't, if parents have concerns, to bring it forward and work with the teacher on whatever those topics may be. So bottom line, I, I trust the professionals in our classrooms to make these decisions.
I have a quotation, I've set right up my interest alley. Values are important. Here's a quotation from the president of the National Association of Secondary School Principals, dated nineteen fifty-two. President of the National Association of Secondary School Principals. Students must have something to believe, not only to believe, but to believe in. So teachers are examples. We teach values, virtue, manners make us man. That's important. And that's, that's what I mean about the quality, the value of the teachers themselves. It's not only is the quality of the educator in the classroom remains the number one factor contributing to student success, Casey Bertram in, in the book Billson Day, Chronicle on March the twenty-third. By the way, that national president was my father, right back, or right black, he was one of the first EDDs in America, from, from Harvard in Alabama and Chicago.
Well, yes, Jamie?
Well, also where my teacher had to. I taught middle school, mainly middle school, for the majority of my career. And I have been to a lot of luncheons in the Bozeman School District this year. We go to all the schools and they present data, and we meet teachers, and we visit classrooms. And I spent thirty-three of my years in, in a classroom working with kids. And I would encourage people, because I too trust teachers, I have never worked with or met a teacher that was anything other than caring so much and so deeply about the kids. And if parents are engaged in their kids' educational process, they can go and talk, I would encourage them to go and talk to their teachers if they have a specific concern. Because we are human and we make mistakes, and I've wound up, I'm told on myself many times, actually. And so, but I, teaching is a labor of love. It is. It's something that you do because you love going to work every day and you love working with kids. I'll stop right there.
You know, I think this is where we're refocusing and implementing evidence-based, basic curriculums that focus on core learning, because that is the most important thing that we're lacking right now. I just read a study by a guy at Hoover Institute at Stanford that said if we could get our students proficient at math and science as the rest of the whole readers are, that our TDP would probably grow in additional four point five percent over the next twenty years. And we need to get back to focusing, focusing on that. And I think this is where our, our students are being distracted and they're spending time focusing on things other than core curriculum. And so that's how we do that, implement policies that advocate for refocusing on core.
Yeah, that's a good question, right? I support their choice in making decisions, what to do, particularly regarding values that they may have. We all have different values. And that's what teachers have to deal with every day, with students and their parents in the classroom that may have different values. So I think, like Sandy said, communicating with the teacher, I think would be beneficial. And we should talk to them about that and understand that, but it's, it's one of the workload issues that's facing our teachers.
Right there, and then over there.
Questions? This is for the educators. I've been, Gary's one, and Sandra might be the other one, right now. Who determines curriculum for each grade and who determines what the textbooks are? Is that a board issue, or is that a issue that's delegated somewhere else?
Who, he's asking, who decides about the curriculum and what the teachers teach?
Maybe teachers.
And the textbooks, I'm sorry. Yeah, Liana, go for it.
I'll go first, because I, I work in curriculum, math education curriculum around the country. So the process of curriculum is, a committee gets together in the district, involves many stakeholders, and first year is we research what, what the standards are and what research says about that particular curriculum area. So there's like a year of research. And once that's been vetted, then, you know, community's reform, they try to find what curriculum's gonna match, what the standards say that needs to be taught, what best research practices are. That's the second year. It's the third year that they start to vet, you know, and choose some curriculums. So the district committees might have like three curriculums in any subject area, and they say, here are ones that need research and are the best practices. And then teachers pile them to see how they work out. And so, and so it's a whole very step-by-step kind of process, and people have been put all along the way. And it takes a while before one is decided on. And once it's decided, how it's implemented also takes a lot of time to, to help the people to come in and do that, and it's a long, involved process.
Who else wants to speak? Gary?
Yeah, thank you. Just bear on to what Liana said. The last four years, I've been on an OPI, Negotiated Roommate Committee for Educator Prep Program Standards. And I served on the OPI Quality Schools Task Force for Chapter Fifty-Five, which is the K-12 accreditation standard. So those standards dictate what every district in the state has to comply with, and those standards can change. And then the districts, as Liana said, have to look at what curriculums we apply that match those standards. So there's several different layers of how curriculum is chosen, but ultimately, we have to meet the standards that are set by OPI.
Anybody else?
Office of Public Instruction.
I might add that I, I believe the Office of Public Instruction has a cycle of curriculum materials, the review process that schools need to meet. So we're also on a cycle of review and adoption that's dictated through the Office of Public Instruction. Sorry about the ampersands, we're full of them.
Okay. Anybody else?
We never had a chance to hear how textbooks are selected. That was part of the question.
Yeah, part of the question was, how do textbooks get selected? Okay, other.
And my, my understanding is that the publishers are calling the shots, and they look at the states that are most populated with students. So in effect, publishers are giving us those textbooks which Texas wants. So it's a Hobson's choice, you take this one or you don't take any at all, kind of thing. I could be dead wrong on that, but that's the way I've always understood it, that we really don't have much of a choice, according to the publishers.
And I would just add on to that, a few weeks ago, I happened to have one, but there are the Montana State Attorney General, and he informed me, and I had a question about textbooks, and, and there was some textbook issues in Clancy, and the state has actually put some laws down as far as what can and can't go in schools. Then ultimately, where the issue was in Clancy was, it was, the superintendent signed off on it, but it was a librarian's list. He just didn't really look at the list. Apparently, there were some, some issues with some of those, some of the books, so.
Gary?
Good. In our district, there's, a committee is put together, a large committee, that reviews the textbooks that are gonna be used in classrooms, at all grade levels. So they're reviewed very closely by a group of people, and they decide what fits their ability to meet the accreditation standards. So it's, it's a, I think it's a very good process of really reviewing those books to decide which ones best can meet the needs of the students to achieve accreditation standards.
Want to speak to?
Put it just out. Sure. Backline. I've been on a couple of curriculum in a small rural district, but part of the process is that you are given standards, and then you are given best practices. Once, what are the best practices of teaching, different content material? And so the professionals look for that in textbooks, and there's a wide variety of textbooks, and, and yes, sometimes they come out of larger states that have a bigger, the textbook companies are geared towards that, but we as professionals are sitting down and looking at the textbooks, matching them with standards and best practices to see what fits for us.
All right. Over there.
My question is for the incumbents running again this, this year. You opened, a majority of you opened with comments about the budget and lots of comments about teacher retention. What are some specific things that you've done on the board in the past term that have made those two issues better?
And the two issues are teacher retention.
Teacher retention and the budget.
And the budget. That those of you who've been on the board before, that would be you. Gary?
Gary, you and you.
We've done, we handle our finances in this district extremely well. Ninety percent of our funds go to salaries and benefits for teachers. And in the last several years, to deal with funding issues, a couple of things I've done is lead resolutions and legislation to create the multi-district cooperative, which allows districts to transfer funds between elementary and high school districts or surrounding districts. And then the safety levy, which has been very valuable to us in the last year, thank you to the voters, for passing our safety levy, which takes funds out of our general fund budget and allows that to grow. So there are a lot of things we can do within the district to deal with our budget, but it's very limited. That's where it goes to the external stakeholders in education, which is legislators and other entities in the state we want to deal with.
Okay. Sandy?
One of the other things that we've been looking at doing is, and they're looking at doing this in several of the schools around the state, is growing your own educators, looking at our young people in high school, who, and having them identified perhaps by teachers or parents or themselves as potential teachers, and helping, and, and the school district potentially, this, this is at the talking phase and the planning, potential planning phase, but looking at that as a resource for us, because frankly, that we've gone from a hundred for one job to ten for one job. And I believe, I've had lots of teachers throughout my career, we have excellent teachers coming out of Montana State and who are here and who want to stay here. And so we're looking at whether we can support and grow our educators within our district as it makes it harder for other people to move into our district.
Anybody else wanna speak? Yeah. Liana?
So in addition to what Gary and Sandy said, one of the things I don't take for granted is that our voters have always approved our levies, and that's simply so that we can maximize what our limit is in the budget to, to fund our schools to the fullest amount that we can. And part of that is trustee. In the spring, we go to over fifty public meetings and, and just educate the public on what those levies are about and what's coming up in the elections. And so we attend those. So in the spring, we're going from Sunrise Rotary to League Women Voters, to retired people, so, and we take turns, and so I'm sitting in on those.